All right, should be my plan B.
Good evening. This meeting will be called to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oakland Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided and the schedule of regular meetings is that was adopted at our reorg meeting on January 2nd is on our website. For roll call, Bethany.
Mrs. Ezekiel.
Here.
Mrs. Falpel.
Here.
Mr. Stotts.
Here.
Mrs. Rotondo.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mrs. Maumian.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mrs. Butchka.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there's no executive session at this time, so we're going to move right into Section 3, which is the budget presentation. Bethany and Dr. Mc...
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. And so the theme moving into 2425 is shifting from recovery to rigor. And so for the last three years, we've really been dedicated, we've been dedicated in recovering from the pandemic. And so we now believe that it is appropriate to dramatically shift our approach based on what we've learned over the last three years and really to be able to double down on the things that work well and then move away from some of the things that we don't believe are paying that same level of dividend and focus on a rigorous instructional environment for all students. And so we're grounded by our mission, vision, and values, and so that's the guiding principle for how we make decisions, how we develop programs, and how we make strategic investments. And so the number one question, what is our budget challenge? And so unfortunately, this year, we were notified by the state that we were going to see a dramatic decrease in overall state aid. We were one of 140 school districts across the state of New Jersey that saw significant decreases in state aid. We are thankful that our board leadership, as well as school and district leadership, and many of our community members went to bat and advocated at the state. And we're going to talk a little bit later in the presentation about how we can continue to put pressure on the state for a fair and more equitable funding formula that does not disproportionately impact the students, both in our community as well as communities across the state of New Jersey. And so we received a total reduction of roughly $632,000 in reductions to state aid with a net increase of about $22,000 to $23,000 of additional funding due to our school choice program, which gives us a net difference of negative $610,000, which accounts for about a 17% decrease in overall state aid in a single year. And so that is our budget challenge. And so moving into this particular budget cycle, we wanted to make sure that two things took place. That working closely with our school leadership team is that we prioritized how do we maintain a continuity of service? And then also, how do we make sure that to the highest degree possible, we maintain the integrity and the consistency of our staffing? No short order, and you're going to hear more about how the numbers fell and what is in the budget and then what is unfortunately not in this current budget. So it's a note in the actual presentation that actually gives the breakdown. Well, I shared it. And so our net reduction in state aid was six, was more than the 610. And so the net 610 loss is based on the $21,000, $22,000 in additional revenue that came from our school choice program. But the actual reduction from the state was $632,000. Okay. And so when we think about what is our responsibility as a school district, it's to analyze our current systems and to remove barriers that are preventing our young people from being successful. It's to shift into building capacity for the sole purpose of instructional improvement. We want to make sure that we're supporting and highlighting effective teaching, and then we also want to make sure that we are supporting our leaders on campus and in classrooms. And then we also want to make sure that we're supporting and retaining our faculty and staff. And so Bethany is going to share with you the actual financials.
Can anybody hear me okay? Okay. So, no big surprise, no large enrollment growth in Oakland. I'm estimating about an increase of a net three children overall. That includes the children that you sent to Collingswood Middle School and Collingswood High School. As Dr. McDowell alluded to, when I started here in Oakland, 2013 state aid was roughly 32% to 33% or more of your budget on any given year. We're now down below the 30% mark for state support for your local school district. So what that means, it's a larger draw on your tax levies. There's going to be more that your taxpayers are going to have to pay to support the schools. And that's roughly 61.21% of your overall revenues is in support from local tax levy. What's helping this budget, and I caveat that help is not the best term, but it's going to be getting us through 2425, is at the end of last school year in July, we received a letter from the Department of Ed with an, and again, this makes zero sense to anybody who's listening, but we received an additional $400,000 in state aid at the end of the school year that they awarded us for maintenance of equity. Okay, fine, we took it. Luckily, we hadn't spent it all in this school year. So when we got notice of the state aid reductions, we were able to sit with Mrs. Bolden and my assistant, Steve Burns. We rewrote the expiring ESER and ARP grants to include those items that Mrs. Bolden needs for supplies and curriculum, the Chromebooks, the things that we need, the day-to-day, things you need in your classroom, one-time purchases. We were able to use those monies to lower our 2425 expenses. So I'm estimating a 6.15% budgeted fund balance. So what that means is usually when we've finished the audit year, any funds unspent above the state threshold becomes excess surplus and it's to be used in future years' budgets. I'm declaring as much as I possibly can in 2425 to balance this budget. So once I spend that $625,000, it's gone. So I caveat all of this. We were able to work out 2425 mathematically, but as Mr. Stotts knows, we've been here before. Once I spend that $600,000, it's going to take us a long time to recoup that money. But the good news is, thank God, we had it. So a lot of the things that we need, like the Chromebook replenishments and things like that, we're able to order. So next year, you know, we won't be, you know, we're not going to skip a beat with what the kids need in the classroom. I'm also exhausting our maintenance reserve account. You're allowed to have two reserve accounts per the state, one for capital projects and one for maintenance. You have $304,000 in maintenance reserve. I withdrawing that to pay for the maintenance line items in your budget. All that to balance, to balance out your budget, to reduce the number of cuts we had to make, even though we made several, more than several. So here's a pie chart, just so you can see, again, about 61% of your budget is local. So we may have to get creative in future years on how we generate more local without it being taxes. Expenditures, just a quick breakdown, almost 81% of this budget is purely instruction, meaning it's staff, it's salaries and benefits, and it's services, direct services to children. 978,000 is student services, so that'd be like health, child study team. Facilities, about 614,000. Again, that's where the 304,000 of the maintenance reserve is going against that 614,000. And about 370,000 in administrative costs. So about 3.63% is administrative costs. And that's kind of how it breaks down. So as small as we are and as mighty as we are, 81% of this budget is directly servicing children, and that's how we want it. Year-over-year comparison for your tax levy, 2324's tax levy was 5.9 million. Next year's tax levy is 6.2 million with a difference of $244,860 or $196 per home at the average resident assessment of $165,900.
So it's, one, to talk about the numbers, and now it's, it's now important for us to make those numbers real. And so our first priority is to support rigorous learning. And so making sure that we're providing high-quality, engaging, and differentiated instruction, adjusting our multi-tiered system of support. So these are the most intensive supports for our needyest of students. Support the expansion of our PLCs. And so over the last two years, we have worked in Oakland to refine how our educators meet, what they meet about, and that has helped maintain a continued level of growth year over year based on their collective efforts in their professional learning communities. Increasing the effectiveness and the quality of professional development. This will be in partnership with Collingswood. And so what we're trying to do is place greater emphasis on how do you more effectively personalize professional development, given we have very, a much wider range of educator within our school system. And so we have new to the profession, we have mid-career, and then we have master-level educators. And so how do you make sure that you've got quality learning experiences for all of those categories of staff? Addressing the mandated curriculum shifts specifically in literacy and mathematics, and then reinforcing our student support model, which is academic, school culture, and mental health. And then also, how are we building capacity for more inclusive classrooms? And so what are those actual investments? And so maintaining character strong, which is helping students build positive relationships and meaningful connections on campus aligned with our goals around social-emotional learning. Maintenance of our full-time social worker, who provides wraparound, social, emotional, academic, family-based support to both students, staff, and family. Positive school culture, continue our Equity Foundation training and extending that to instructional assistants and support staff in this upcoming school year. Maintenance of learning acceleration, providing small group instruction to all students, but then providing tier-two and tier-three intensive support to select students. Maintenance of our special education programs, self-contained, resource push-in, supplemental, and related services. Updating of our curriculum platforms and also the resources aligned to the new standards for our educators. Shifting from cycles of evaluation comprehensively to cycles of observations and constructive feedback among our educators. And then also looking at how do we put a better foot forward with our instructional assistants in their overarching compensation. And so District Priority Number Two is supporting our infrastructure. How do we make sure that we provide appropriate workspace for all staff? How do we recapture educational space within our school? How do we continue to improve safety services and student support? And then how do we continue to maintain our facility and then plan for the future? And then updating of our technology services and support and then improving communication. And so those investments include planning for future expansion of preschool. And so for the first time in a long time, Oakland actually has a waiting list for preschool. And so we'll be looking closely at the numbers between now and the summer, moving into September, to determine in subsequent years, do we need to expand and add an additional preschool class? Because we fully believe that having access to high-quality early childhood education should be a right of every Oakland family. Long-range facilities plans, making sure that ongoing projects and general maintenance does not lag in service. And then also, and this is a conversation that has come up as recently, is making sure that every student has a safe route to school, whether they are students that attend the Oakland school campus or Oakland students that are going across the highway or the Pike Highway, the Pike, making sure that they get to the middle and the high school. We're also seeking to partner with agencies that work exclusively in Camden County. We just found out last week, there are grant dollars available for research studies, additional equipment, and we want to take advantage of that. We also want to take a look at updating biking policies and making sure that we are a more bike-friendly school district with additional equipment and access for bike storage. In addition to technology services and support, looking at student and staff device replenishment. We are a one-to-one computing environment, and we want to make sure that the equipment is sufficient for students to be able to fully access the curriculum. And so we're going to be looking at our Chromebook policies and deployment and also the way in which we store our devices, as well as improving customer service and the technical assistance response time from the technology team, while also looking at our cybersecurity protocols as well as data protection for faculty, staff, and students. In addition to communication, media outlet engagement, continually making improvements to our website, as well as digging a bit deeper into social media with overall community engagement. And so Bethany is going to share with you some of the cost-saving measures that have assisted in this process.
Those of you that have been around Oakland for a while, most of these you know, but we're currently looking for grant opportunities. Our joint insurance ventures, the Brownie County Joint Insurance Fund, every year we get rebates back from our insurances, and that does help, that brings some miscellaneous income back into the district because you're co-owners of the joint insurance funds. We're members of the Alliance for Competitive Energy Sources Utility Consortium with New Jersey School Boards Association. They competitively bid out our electric and gas to get a cheaper rate. If there's a co-op for purchases, we are on it, both Collingswood and Oakland. I've signed, I've signed you up for every co-op that ever there was. So if we can buy something via a co-op where it's already bid, we do a lot of that in the area of facilities. Shared services goes without saying, Collingswood and Oakland, we share just about everything. And that's really saved both districts on more than one occasion because both districts get the value of full administrative services, buildings and grounds. But when it gets to be a budget crisis like this, you really start to see the cost savings measures because you just, you just see the value of everything that we share. We're two different districts, but we literally share everything. Transportation, we utilize Camden County Ed Services Commission. Oakland Public Works does our trash removal. And then again, by providing robust, high-quality preschool and developing and strengthening your in-district programs, we do keep a lot of kids in district for their special ed services. Some do go out, but we, not very many. So that's to be applauded because we do, we do keep a lot of, a lot of our learners in district. Yeah. Yeah. I believe, well, no, that's the 18 to 21-year-old program in Collingswood, and there might be one or two Oakland residents on there. And there might be one or two Oakland children on the 18 to 21-year-old program that utilize that bus. Oh, sorry. I'm trigger-happy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go. Didn't want to do it.
The shared services, Oakland, Collingswood, Oakland, Collingswood Borough, what does Collingswood Borough do for us? I think I should say Oakland Borough, who does the field maintenance.
Well, no, we should say both. So because Collingswood Borough, we have, Collingswood School District has shared services with Collingswood Borough for custodial. They lower our overall custodial costs for both districts. Because we also clean, some of our full-time custodians also clean for the borough.
Yes, the school district cleans for Borough, yes, but I'm not sure what the Borough does for the school district.
I just told you. Like, it lowers the overall cost of the custodial that I then farm out to Oakland.
How?
I lower the salaries accordingly for the staff that are already there.
If you're lowering our salaries, they must be doing something for us.
Okay.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the, again, when I do the shared service contracts, and I've said this probably 1,000 times, but I'll say it 1,001 times, when I do the shared service contract, I look at the actual staff performing the services, and I only charge Oakland's pro rata share, but we lower it if there's two or three parties getting the benefit of it, I'm only charging you your share, I'm not charging you all of it.
I see, which is, okay, fine.
I'm only charging you like the piece that is, like, for example, the bus, in addition to the 18 to 21-year-old program having some Oakland residents on it, it also runs to Woodland to pick up Oakland middle schoolers so they can participate in some clubs and activities in Collingswood. So it's, it's just a use of...
Picks up Oakland students in Woodland?
No.
Woodland students of Woodland, sorry. But you know what I know.
When I'm, my question is, it's not an, it's for, it's not an Oakland bus, and I just want to make sure that that's clear on there.
Okay.
That it's a Collingswood bus.
Okay.
Because I don't want there to be confusion that Oakland has a bus that we can use for class trips. We don't have a bus.
No, you don't.
I want to make sure that that's clear to anyone watching.
So the van that drops some of our students off at the elementary school, is that who said that's being transported, is that, that is still, or is that something still?
I don't know what van you're referring to.
A travel van or something.
Yeah, those are private buses.
Yeah, that's not me.
Not district-owned.
Yeah, this is a Collingswood bus that we try to use as often as possible for everybody. And then like Dr. McDowell alluded to earlier, post-budget, we're going to be asking for your support. This is, this document's going to be a PDF, I'm going to put it on the website, those links are active. But we need to stay mindful of, we got this balance, we got this budget to balance. But we're not out of the woods, the governor has to have his budget balanced by June 30th. The state aid formula has expired, we need to have our voices heard. So as many people who can click on and just inundate the senators and assembly people with the concerns that we have for our school district, the better. As I volunteered to sit on any committee that the senators wanted, I would just, everybody just get it out there, get your neighbors, just inundate them with the concerns we have for Oakland. Because a $600,000 cut in one school, school district, again, we were able to sustain it for one year. If it comes again, I don't, I don't know what the state's going to expect of the borough at this point. So we really need to get out there and scream and yell as much as we possibly can.
I have questions, but I'm going to go back to my mic. Thanks. I guess first question, can you please add that presentation to our board docs? It's not in there. So that's the first question. The second question is, I didn't look at the links because we don't have the presentation yet for the legislative letters, but...
It's the same ones on the current website.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, and I haven't looked at them recently, I know Teresa brought up that they didn't have numbers in them, and I think it's important that for the Oakland community, it has Oakland numbers in it. So I just want to make sure that that is complete.
Yeah, I had to adjust mine, but I'm, of course, I'm in the know. I'm not, you know, a parent in district and who has time, if we can make that clear.
Yep, because I want to make it as easy as possible for people to just put their name, address, whatever, and send it.
Which numbers are you referring to?
So our budget numbers. So where are the letters on our website right now?
The, the ones that were sent out to the community, their house on the homepage?
Correct. So those, when they were sent out, it just had like a blank. And so I just want to make sure that if we're referencing cuts, that we're using the number for Oakland specifically.
She wants the form to have the money that got cut so that when they're advocating and they're saying, hey, we got cut this much that it's on there, and parents and communities don't have to look for the number to fill it in.
So let me, let me provide a bit of clarity in terms of process of where we are. And so the current funding formula expires. And so while they are determining the new funding formula, it's more important to advocate for the fairness and the equity than it is to get lost in the minutia of the numbers that then may cause more questions. And so I think that there is a widespread level of advocacy of the flaws at its highest level, that the current formula is fundamentally flawed. For example, the current funding formula takes household income as a factor, even though there's no way to leverage, utilize the household income for funding. And so for example, if a billionaire moves into Oakland and lives in a $300,000 home, it doesn't matter whether they're a billionaire, they're still living in a $300,000 home, and therefore the revenue generated from that particular home is unchanged. And so, but the state is looking at people's overall income as a factor, which is causing a disproportionate burden specifically in smaller communities like Oakland that has a smaller number of taxpayers, and they're saying, oh, you have community wealth, you should be paying more in taxes. And we know that that is putting a unnecessary tax burden on community members. And so if we get folks to focus more on the fairness and the equity of the formula, they're going to be arguing for the next six to 12 months, the numbers at the state level. And so we believe that there is greater levels of power with large swaths of community members fighting for fairness and equity and reductions in tax burden opposed to the specific numbers. But we can do that, I just, I don't know if the folks that we're reaching out to are looking at that level of specificity.
Bethany, I'm so sorry. I've got everything in front of me, sorry Denise. You sent out to our community, according to the state's recently released state aid funding, insert district name, will receive insert district amount, reflecting a insert percentage decrease. I had to go back into board docs to find that information. A parent of multiple kids doing a million things has no time. Put that information in the sample letter. That's what Denise was saying.
We will update it. We'll update it.
And that's the one that's on the website, so I just need to make sure that that is updated for what we want the message to be.
And really quick too, if we could also have maybe work together or someone have a script on talking about that equitable, you know, the equity of the gross income, you know, like something to say about that as well, instead of just like the blank slate. But also, you know, as what you're saying, they're going to be arguing the numbers, but maybe in that argument or in that copy paste that you guys can make for us, would also state like, hey, this is why we believe this is happening, maybe you should go back and look at the formula. Because Elon Musk moved into Oakland, and it's not fair.
Can I go back to another question? I know that there's a lot to discuss, but I want to clarify something. So on this document here, where we have enrollments, advertised enrollments.
Right.
It's not consistent with what we saw there, and so the numbers we saw in... And so the numbers we saw in the presentation, which was 501 in 23, 24, and 504 in 24, 25.
This doesn't include preschool, I don't think.
But why is it so changed from this to this? So it went from 240 in 23 to 185 in 24.
I'd have to go back and check. I used the, this is, the middle column is your actual ASSA. So I'd have to look. But the total, why it's not five, whatever, is, this doesn't include preschool. And the advertised enrollments in the budget is not, we, I add the preschool on the preschool screen, but it doesn't include preschool.
So when I, so back in March, I asked for the enrollment, October enrollment report to be added to our monthly enrollment report. So it wasn't added, but the full document's there. This includes pre-K for, to get the 500 number, I believe. It's 240 and 269. So I just want to make sure that we are always looking at the right numbers. 240, 269 is 509. So it's right round about the 500 number.
And these were the numbers, again, 22 is the actual, 23 is the actual, this is an estimate. So I did it based on the kids that I had at the time when I did the budget.
Right, so my question is, this did not include pre-K in 22 and 23?
I can't answer 22 right now. I can go back and look for you.
Or 23.
I just, I, I look at, when I do the estimate, I look at the ASSA. And I move all the grades up, and I take the middle school, I move to the high school and so forth, and then I count special it.
So you're looking at this, this report here, and you're just moving everybody up a year?
Yes, so I would have to go back a couple of years to answer a question from a couple of years ago.
Because it looks like on this that there's a big drop in enrollment.
Right, and it's possible.
And that report is not showing a drop in enrollment.
Right, and it's possible preschool.
That's.
And it's possible it's preschool. But yeah, what I showed you is every children, every kid in this building.
That, that makes no sense.
What doesn't make sense?
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that the budget presentation has 500 roundabout as the number, which will include pre-K and is consistent with last year, but if we take out pre-K, that, I'm, I'm just trying to make sense of it all because it looks like it's a huge change in enrollment. Whereas we're telling our messages, our enrollment hasn't changed. That's, that's my concern.
Well, the projected enrollment that I actually put in the budget document, the preschool's entered on the preschool screen, not on there, that's why. It didn't roll. Like, there's a detailed budget projection report that I have to fill out.
So what is the pre-K number there then?
Forty-four classrooms, 60.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen by four.
Yeah, 60.
Got it. And that would add up then, right? So it's not on here. Okay. All right, thank you.
Wait, wait on that question though. The actual 23 was 240, and I understand that comes from the ASSA, so that's fine. Where'd the estimate for 24 come from?
I looked at the, again, the ASSA that Denise has, and I rolled everybody up. Mine is pre-K, because pre-K has their own separate budget document.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always going to be wonky because pre-K has their own budget document that's included in this document, so. But what I present to the community is all the kids in your building. Plus those you're responsible for that go to Collingswood, your resident children.
Yeah, I have a question about part of the presentation, which again, I don't have it in front of me, but you had said 81% of our budget is for instruction. Is that instruction by staff in our building, or does that include shared services with Collingswood? That have something to do with instruction?
All right, let me get very detailed. Depends on the account number. It may, if we, we share, well, now the nurse is a student service, it includes tuition to Collingswood, because that's direct instruction. So it does include your tuition to Collingswood. Includes faith, vivistis, because she's instructional. Right, but she shared with Collingswood.
She shared.
Right, so she would be in your account number. Trying to think who else is instructional that would be in there. But it's all the people in your building, their salaries, their benefits, all of their supplies, their curriculum stuff. It's Chromebooks, anything instructional. Child study team is considered a student services, nursing is considered a student service. But again, tuition is direct instruction, transportation is a student service. Anything else?
So I just want to address, I guess, the piece that we're, I don't know if it was covered in the budget and I, in the presentation, I just missed it, but that we're going to be down to learning acceleration teachers next year. And so I just wanted to see if anyone, I just want to make that clear, that that's kind of the net effect of this state cut, is that we're going to be down to positions. And it seems like that should be part of the presentation.
It certainly does. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're going from five to three. So that would be, forgive me for not having the numbers, three educators to help with the tier two, tier three, and the multi-tiered support system that was referenced in this. The at-risk students who are at the lower end of one of our district priorities to remove barriers. It's beyond disappointing. How many students total is, are three learning acceleration teachers supposed to be servicing? Again, can someone give me that number? Is it 12 classrooms?
Each one this year, this year there's one per two classrooms, next year it'll be one per four classes.
Got it. 50%, got it.
40% technically, right?
That was my strong suit.
Yeah, I want to say, I just want to make a comment about it. It's, this, this, obviously this budget has been, I mean, I thought last year was hard. This, this has been really tough. And not easy to come at. And it's, I guess, a credit to our building and our building leaders that we've had such good retention. I think if we had teachers leaving, we could just not fill positions. And that, I mean, it's the same net effect, but it's, it's hard when there's people involved. And I just wanted to say that as the board president, you know, I know that we're in a position, we have to balance the budget, we have to raise taxes, we have to do all these things, and we're still not able to provide the same level of staffing we did the previous year. I just also want to make a comment that we did talk previously that those positions weren't always here. They were added after COVID to help address learning loss. So the, I guess the final effect is that we're returning to pre-COVID staffing numbers. And again, I just kind of hope that that would have been part of the presentation, because I think it's important to look at the big picture of all of it. Where we were, where, where we were able to add staff with additional federal funds, where we're going to be next year with a huge decrease in state aid. And the biggest concern right now, well, it's not the biggest, but it is a big concern, is what happens next year. So we don't have any more bank cap. We can't raise taxes anymore beyond the 2%. So next year, we're going to really be crunching numbers if we don't get the state aid numbers up. And so it's really important. If the PTA can help in getting the message out, we really need to push advocacy. It's like big time. We need everybody. So that's it. I just wanted to say that. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions about budget?
I just want to make a comment to point out that we have nine students on the waiting list for preschool. This borough continues to grow. We needed to start thinking about 25, 26 yesterday. And as a board, we need to take a really hard look at our budget lines.
Yeah, it raises an interesting question because we really could use that additional pre-K room. Well, one of the rooms that Collingswood is using, we could potentially use it for Oakland students. And then if we do that, then we're not getting the rent from Collingswood for using that space too. So there's, that'll be a lot to consider moving forward, and I don't know, hopefully we can get all the kids off the waiting list.
Can I just make a comment that this presentation that we have, that wasn't part of the official presentation, but these papers that we, we got tonight with our agenda. Yes, along with the presentation, with the information that was on the presentation, would have been really helpful in discussing this back when, rather than getting it tonight when we have to vote on it. If we'd had that in.
Everything was attached to board docs last week. So you have it, you've had it.
Oh, did we? Okay, my bad. So we had it for a whole week.
I made sure you guys had everything every month. And you had, last week, when we did the full board, committee of the whole, enclosed session, discussion of budget and positions, you had the entire budget document, which is 80 pages. You had the user-friendly budget and the advertised budget, which is what went to the paper. Because there's, so I don't know what else. It was all there.
Yeah, forgive me for not.
Well, the PowerPoint's a presentation, so.
Forgive me for not reviewing that 80-page document.
But that document was also attached. I'm saying it was there, so.
Somewhere in the 80 pages and et cetera.
No, it was, it's a separate attachment.
So I'm going to go back a few years, but I kind of recall sitting around this table. This is going back five years, and always thinking, it's so strange that we got the budget presentation twice. We got it once in March, and then again in April when we actually voted on it, and we saw the PowerPoint both months. And at the time, I was like, why are we seeing the budget twice? But it would be helpful to have that presentation before tonight also. So I do agree with that.
Well, I appreciate your feedback, but please understand we were working until Sunday on these documents. I mean, I'm going to get a little crusty here. I mean, I, I will take the feedback, it's my job, but we were literally, as you very well know, between the two districts, literally crunching numbers. And in some cases, we still are. So I don't want to present something that's not correct, to have it be questioned and to be incited. Rather we give you the most accurate information as I possibly could. So that is why the presentation was not given last month, because we were still literally moving as of last week, as of when we met.
I understand that as well, and I'm not asking for it a month ago, because that was, we had like two weeks to put the budget together. That, that's not what I'm saying. But just having it here in the board docs would be helpful once it's done. Okay, are there any more questions about the budget before we move on to committee of the whole? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to move into committee of the whole?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, we are now in committee of the whole. Do you want to start, Dr. McDowell? Do you want us to start? I know that you were going to address some of the things at the high school.
Sure.
Thank you.
And so because there is, due to the intimate nature of the relationship between Collingswood and Oakland, it's important that albeit incidents did not take place at the Oakland school campus, they do have a, an effect on Oakland students who attend our middle and high school campus. And so what I am referencing is, on Wednesday, April 17th, we convened a meeting among the Collingswood Borough, the Police Department, the Board of Education, and the district to address community concerns related to allegations of racial bias at Collingswood High School. And so we're not going to go into specifics about the investigations, who did what, when, where, or how, other than to say that active investigations are held in the highest of confidence, especially when there are young people involved. And so as, as community leaders, we acknowledge that the hurt, pain, and fear often associated with these allegations is real, and it impacts residents, both adults and children alike. And so we share a clear and strong commitment to focus on the healing of our communities, while simultaneously continuing to build on the work that we've done to create a more inclusive and understanding environment. And so the process that we've been talking about in Collingswood really requires honesty, openness, empathy, and courage if we are going to be able to move forward and to begin to dismantle the harmful effects of racism. And so we encourage parents and community members to talk to their children, their friends, and neighbors about racism and bias in any form, and its profound effect that it has on all of us. And so in the coming weeks, we're going to continue to provide resources that focus on deeper community conversations. And so right now, we are partnering with the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights to provide workshops that do a deep dive into anti-bias topics, proactively addressing discrimination and harassment in real-world situations. And then those sessions will be offered at the Collingswood Senior Community Center and the Perkins Center for the Arts on May 21st and June 4th respectively. Additionally, on May 16th, at the, the sponsorship of the Collingswood School District and the Collingswood Community DEI Committee, we will host a panel discussion entitled Amplifying Black Voices, providing an opportunity to hear directly from Collingswood residents of color. And so moreover, we're also going to be collaborating with a community-based website that is co-constructed between the school district and the borough, that includes resources, upcoming events, and then updates to the work that will continue, and that'll be beginning in May. And so while we work on all of these very challenging topics, we're also making available the New Jersey Bias Crime Hotline, as well as on our, both of our district websites, students have the opportunity and are afforded the ability to file harassment, intimidation, and bullying claims or complaints on the homepage of our websites. And so we currently, we acknowledge that there are, there's no such thing as a short fix when it comes to these longstanding, multi-generational issues. And we don't have all of the answers. But we believe that through collective effort and shared responsibility, we can dismantle these hurtful barriers. We can increase levels of understanding, and then we can create a culture that focuses on all young people having a sense of belonging. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were not shying away from this challenging issue. But we're also reassuring our communities, both in Collingswood, Oakland, and Woodland, that despite what we are dealing with as of today, we have made significant strides in progress along the way. And so we don't ever want to not acknowledge, we're not where we want to be, but we're not where we were. And so we're going to continue to move this work forward.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
On the outside chanting, I haven't upset everybody yet tonight. I'm going to take another swing at it. And this touches on, it deals directly with, with the problems at Collingswood High School recently. But it deals with the bond issue from Collingswood. I would bet the Collingswood board, there's probably not one member on that board knows where the corner of Sloan and Harrison is in Collingswood. But the kids that live there will have to walk 1.8 miles to get to the new edifice that's under the bond issue. And they're told by the chairman of the DEI Committee for Collingswood that they don't care. You know, there's going to be no busing, you just get to school. I think 1.8 miles for a kid that's nine or 10 years old is an awful lot, twice a day in all kinds of weather. And to go with that, you're going to close Sharp School, which admittedly is the oldest school in, in the Borough. But it ignores the fact that there's a big addition on the back of it that's newer than Zane North. Zane North is two blocks from the proposed new school. It would make a lot more sense to have those kids walk an extra two blocks than it would have the kids at Collingswood, or in West Collingswood, walk 1.8 miles. That's, that's an awful long way. And Sharp School has the largest minority enrollment of any of the Collingswood elementary schools. Those kids, for the most part, live in West Collingswood. Those kids are also losing their elementary school. They're going to have to walk as much as 1.8 miles to get to school. And it's, Collingswood. And it's, Collingswood talks a very good game, they don't practice a very good game. The opportunity to show that those, those kids in West Collingswood, that the borough really cares about them, is lost, because you're closing the school, you're making them walk, and you've said that you don't care how they get to school. And the chairman of your, your DEI Committee, Mr. Smith, has said that.
So let me, let me correct the record. That was, that is, that is not an appropriate characterization of what was said. What was said is that we are a walking district, as dictated by state statute, and what we, what we said was that we are going to work collectively to ensure that all young people have safe routes to school. We did not say that we did not care, nor that we did not acknowledge that transportation was a challenge. What we said was that we're going to take every possible option, put it on the table, and see what we would be able to do, given that the proposed changes in Collingswood would not take effect until September of 2027, and that we would be taking substantial periods of time, including, we've already begun engaging in that work around safe routes to school and possible transportation levels of support. We've already started that work now, in preparation, because we don't believe we should wait until September of 2027 to ensure that, that kids have safe routes to school. And so, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what it is versus what it's not. And so, at the end of the day, we have been pretty clear and pretty consistent for well over a decade, that Collingswood Elementary Schools have been significantly over capacity for many, many years. What that translates into, and, is, is that we have young people receiving educational services in stairwells, basements, and hallways. That's what it means. It also means is that we have students receiving what should be confidential educational services in open spaces. And so, the state has been pretty clear that in order for all of these pieces to work, choices had to be made. And so, when we look, and we're not gonna relitigate it here, because it's not appropriate, but I would encourage folks who do have an interest, we will be engaging in smaller, more intimate conversations over the next six months. Large meetings with 150 people, not the most appropriate place to have those discussions. And so, we acknowledge that we're going to need to have lots more discussions. And so, the goal that was stated in September of 2022 was pretty clear, that the school district was in, was seeking to acquire the Good Shepherd facility. It is a 43,000-square-foot elementary structure that would be the youngest facility in, in district inventory. In order to be able to acquire that building, the state requires us to decommission two smaller schools. And so, we are not able to add the level of square footage, or add-on square footage of ADA-compliant, more accessible, newer buildings, without making some really hard choices. We've already engaged both the leadership, as well as the parent and community groups over in West Collingswood, and we're gonna be working closely together over the next several years and beyond, in order to make sure that we not only do right by all of our students, but that we also find a constructive way to leverage the building that is currently Sharp Elementary School, to provide community resources, community value, and community services. And so, that was our last discussion that we had with the Oakland, excuse me, the Sharp PTA, as well as Sharp Leadership, Sharp Staff. And we're gonna continue to engage our community until we get it right. And so, this is a construction project, it's not a valuation of picking and choosing winners and losers. It's that how do we create, how do we utilize the resources that we have at our disposal to the highest degree possible? And so, it does require some tough choices. The same argument around the nostalgia and the emotional attachment to our buildings is also happening at the Garfield School. And so, the Garfield School is not in West Collingswood, but the families that go to Garfield, including mine, my daughter goes to Garfield Elementary, are no less deserving and no less attached to their sense of community, their school, and so forth. And so, these are very challenging circumstances that we are all having to address, but what we believe is that the proposal that is on the table moves us, and doesn't solve for every problem, but it puts us in a much better place and adds a higher degree of flexibility, specifically allowing us to bring young people together sooner rather than later, so that we don't wait until young people are 17 and 18, making very poor choices at high school, we're bringing them together in fourth grade. And so, we believe that if we can establish a sense of community much earlier, we can get out in front, and we can be a better and a stronger school system.
So, I wanna chime in. I'm sorry if I'm interrupting. So, I just wanna make it clear that Oakland voters, the Oakland Board, we don't get a vote on the Collingswood referendum project. I actually think it makes a lot of sense. If I was a Collingswood voter, I think it's a smart forward-linking move to look, to acquire Good Shepherd. I think it makes a ton of sense. But putting my Oakland hat on, I just want to look at, so we worked really hard, six, seven years ago, to bring all the Collingswood students and Oakland students together for the one time in sixth grade. And so, if this passes, then all the Collingswood students will be getting together earlier, and then Oakland will go back to being the outsiders again. And I just wanna make sure that we do everything that we can, as an Oakland school, Oakland Board, to make sure that Oaklanders are not outsiders when they get to middle school. I wanna make sure we're as prepared. You know, I wanna make sure if they got additional music, I wanna make sure that we have the music. I don't want our kids behind the music when they start middle school, because they have all these additional resources by being able to share a building. So I just, the message to my fellow board members is to make sure that we keep an eye on that, and what sort of, you know, gifted programs they have, what sort of programs for learning acceleration they have, just to make sure that, are they gonna be using lockers over there? Are our kids gonna be behind, because they don't know how to use a locker? All of those things.
No lockers.
No lockers.
Yeah. But all those things, I just need us to be mindful of.
Yes, yes. No lockers. That decision was made.
Can I just add one small thing? And this is from the mouths of babes. I've heard it from multiple students in Collingswood Middle School, is they watch the Collingswood Elementary Schools go to see the theatrical performances of the middle school and high school, and they know that Oakland isn't invited. And I know that this might seem small to some, but it might spark a real interest in theater to others. In addition, that means the Collingswood kids are in those buildings sooner, and familiarized with it sooner than the Oakland kids. So even as it stands, there's a bit of a, well, you're already part of this, and you guys come later.
Yeah, I took a note of that. I didn't realize that Oakland wasn't invited.
No.
Okay, I made a, I made a note. I'll email somebody.
Yeah, you're, you're right about the, the vote. Oakland doesn't get the vote on it, but the upside of that is Oakland also doesn't pay a dime to the, the bond issue. So, that, that's the good news that goes with it. But, and on paper, it makes a great deal of sense. You're absolutely correct. It's, it's the smartest thing going. You've got the right building, it, it's designed for it, you order it to fit what your needs are, terrific. My point is, is just coming back to the, the DEI proposal, that, that is, I think should be solved before you decide that you're gonna spend $45 million to, to do this. There ought to be some indication of, of how you're gonna do that. Collingswood talks repeatedly, in fact, the Collingswood Crier that I got today in the mail espouses all the DEI things. Collingswood talks a great game, but they don't walk the walk, as evidenced by, we're gonna close the school on the west side that admittedly is the largest minority population.
So let me, let me also be, provide just an additional layer of clarity, and then, I mean, I believe it would probably be more appropriate for us to, to move on. The bond proposal is not a DEI proposal, it's a construction proposal. And so, the only reason why DEI has been brought up is that in the reimagining of what schools look like, it's one simple premise: our schools should mirror our community. And so, that then brings, you know, topics or discussions, but we did not put forward a proposal for the purpose of DEI. We put forward a proposal because we have a construction challenge, and we need flexibility due to our enrollment. And so, I, I think that we, we wanted to just make sure that the reason why we're even talking about a proposal is because the Good Shepherd closed during the pandemic, and, once it became available, we knew that it could address many of the challenges that we had with our capacity issues. DEI is just one of multiple lenses that we're using to inform planning, but it is not, it's not a DEI initiative.
Yeah, no, I understand that. My, my point, and I guess I didn't finish it. The, the, the students in, in middle school and high school see what's going on in town, the parents of those students see what's going on in town, and while it's not a DEI proposal, in fact, has an effect on the DEI, is that why we're having problems at the high school level at this point in time, because the kids don't believe that anything's gonna change? Is that possible?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna speak for, you know, 14,000 residents on why does institutional racism still exist. And so, I think that it's indicative of, when we talk about differences among people, lack of proximity sometimes contributes to lack of understanding. And so, the closer you bring individuals together, the more opportunities they have to get to know each other, they have the opportunity to establish real, meaningful relationships, dispel myths, and that can sometimes have an overall positive effect that dramatically decreases the likelihood of these systemic issues. We've got, we're talking about a multi-generational challenge that will not be solved this year, won't be solved next year, but it will be better next year and in subsequent years.
Do you want to add on a positive note?
Yep.
Although Oakland doesn't get a vote, and you're not paying for it, your kids will get the benefit of the athletic complex, which I think we can all agree, we can do better when it comes to the athletic complex. So, when, when it's brand-new, the Oakland kids will get the benefit of something that's quite wonderful.
I just wanna circle back before I forget, but because you mentioned it here in this conversation, and it was part of the budget presentation also, talking about the safe routes to school. I know we've talked in this room before about the crossing at White Horse Pike and Newton, and I would just love for the district to be on top of seeing if we can get a lighted crosswalk, something to make it more noticeable. I, also recent, and I don't know if this is true, but is the crossing guard at the White Horse Pike and Collins have there in time for middle school dismissal? So that was a question, because I had heard that they didn't get there until elementary dismissal, which is a little bit later. And then, my last thing, which would just affect our kids that go over to Collingswood, is that the crosswalk on Collings, across from Knights Park, is very dark at night. The area's dark. There's lights, but it's dark. And so, I would love if that could also have lights at the crosswalk. It doesn't have to be a red light, but something that you could push to indicate that there's somebody crossing there. I mean, these are all long-term things, but as you're having the discussions, it'd be great to keep those on.
Can you send that to me?
I sure can, yep. Okay, anyone else for the committee of the whole? Is there a motion to come out of committee of the whole?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Section 5, future dates and miscellaneous information. On Wednesday, May 8th, some students and staff will be hosting a lemonade stand to raise awareness for Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation for Childhood Cancer, and that will take place in front of the building from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then, 5.02 is a list of important dates and upcoming meetings. There is NJL State, I'm sorry, NJSL testing coming up the week of May 13th. Our next board meeting is May 21st. There's other dates listed there as well. Moving on to Section 6, this is the approval of board minutes from the March 19th meeting, the March 19th retreat, and then, do we also want to include the, the minutes from last week also? Yes, I think I saw the special meeting.
Oh, did she put them up already? I wasn't sure, because she was working on them.
Oh, I think, yeah, they are there, yeah. Can we approve those as well?
Yeah.
So approve those three. Is there a motion to approve those three items?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, 6.02. There's no unfinished business. Moving on to Section 7, annual appointments. I'm gonna pass it over to.
Yeah, that would be me, and I'll be as quickly as, as quickly as possible, I can't even talk about it. I'd be the quickest possible. Okay, no problem. So this is our annual rework agenda, where we do all our annual appointments, and the reason why everything is listed and it's long is because there's some state law that says I have to appoint this person and do a board resolution and send it to somebody. So with that being said, item 7.01 is the appointments of me as your secretary to take your minutes, our auditor, Inverso and Stewart, our doctor, and our solicitor, Kate Hart Scatcher, broker of record for health insurance, Brown and Graham. And 7.02, 7.03, Hardenberg is your broker of record for your non-health lines, insurance, I'd be like your worker's comp, and building and liability. 7.04, architect of record is Garrison, oh, and just FYI, all the RFP evaluations have been attached to the agenda, I'm sorry. 7.05 is a listing of our official bank, this first Colonial Community Bank. 7.06 is the listing of the official newspapers. 7.07 is the signature authorization of all the bank accounts, basically who gets to sign what check. 7.08 is approving me as your qualified purchasing agent and studying the bid amount for Oakland School District at $44,000. 7.09 is just authorizing me to purchase CDs and banknotes for investment purposes, if there's sufficient cash to do so. 7.10 is authorizing me to transfer funds via wire as needed, and I pretty much, we do that for your bond payment. 7.11 is just approving me to promptly handle any business affairs between board meetings, basically pay bills, so usually PSCNG comes at an odd time, as well as Comcast. So I pay the bill, and then I bring it to you to ratify at the next board meeting. 7.12 is appointing me as your custodian of records, and my assistant, Steve Burns, as the alternate custodian of records. And what that means is we get to handle all of your Oprah requests.
Yay.
7.13 is approving John Longo, if you guys didn't get to meet John yet, wave, John. I'm sorry. Approving John, who's our supervisor of buildings and grounds, as the school district's asbestos management officer, your safety and health designee, your integrated pest management coordinator, your chemical hygiene officer, and asbestos hazardous emergency response act coordinator, your AHEA coordinator. 7.14 is approving myself, John Longo, and Steve Burns, as the district's write-down coordinators for Piusa. 7.15 is approving me as your PACO, basically your public, public agency compliance officer. 7.16 is approving Windsor Yamamoto as your compliance action officer for affirmative action in the district. 7.17 is approving Dr. Elizabeth Whitehouse as the, as the compliance action officer for the 504s in the district. 7.18 is approving OmniGroup as your third-party administrator for the district's 403B investment plan that we have for the employees. 7.19 is approving Mary Hopkins as your homeless liaison. 7.20 is authorizing Jen Bolden as the issuing officer for working papers for the 24-25 school year. 7.21 is approving Windsor Yamamoto as your Title IX coordinator for the 24-25 school year. 7.22 is approving your school safety and security plan, that also includes your emergency operations plan, your crisis prevention and response procedures, and your emergency management plan. 7.23 is approving Jen Bolden as your school district safety specialist for the 24-25 school year. 7.24 is approving Dr. Elizabeth Whitehouse as the Americans with Disability Act officer for the 24-25 school year. 7.25 is a listing of the 24-25 school district curriculum. 7.26 is just the statement we have to make for state, for administrative. 7.26 is just the statement we have to make for state, for administrative code that we collect and maintain student records in accordance with law. 7.27 is a listing of your special ed programs for 24-25 school year. 7.28 is approving the educator practice rubric as listed, and it's the Charlotte Danielson framework. 7.29 is your annual adoption of all your board policies and bylaws, and they are on the website. 7.30 is approving your substitute rates in all the different areas, teacher, secretary, nurse, et cetera. And that is it. So looking for approval for 7.01 through 7.30.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of these items?
Yeah, just a couple of quick, uh, quick ones on 713, 714, asbestos, POCIA, et cetera. Is there certification that's required for that?
For John himself?
Yes.
I don't think so. There's just, it's plans, and we do have the state does come in to make sure that you have the planned documents, and they have to be updated, sometimes annual, sometimes every three years.
Okay.
But yeah, John's in charge of making sure that we're up to date on all our plans.
Any other questions? All right, on a roll call.
All right. Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushka?
Yes.
Moving on to section eight. This is the first public comment section. It seems a while to get here. But this one is for agenda items only. So if you'd like to, if you have something to say, please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Lila Andehar, 21 West Holly Avenue. So I went back and forth, wondering if I even wanted to speak here tonight about the budget, but I will admit that I'm not prepared to talk numbers. So I spoke to my husband, and I said, I don't know if I want to speak as a parent of an OPS student, or if I want to speak as PTA president. So he said to me, Lila, just talk about what you love. So that's what we're going to do here tonight. Right? So as most of you, I felt sick to my stomach when I saw that number. Six hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred ten thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars. I won't pretend to understand the bureaucratic crap that goes into coming to that decision, so I'm not even going to touch that. What I am going to speak to is being a mother of a child that's been at OPS since 2019, which also happens to be when COVID happened. Excuse me, I have everything written down because I'll never remember it. I think we all know that COVID left a trail of damage in its path. And we started to see that once the students were back in school. We started to see it in their test scores. We saw it in their academic progress or their lack thereof. We saw it in their socialization skills. Fast forward to our district receiving a little bit of money, and it made a world of difference in these same children. These children who were terribly failing and suffering and lagging behind their peers. Test scores began to change. I think we all saw it. Learning methods changed, teacher availability changed, one-on-one interacting actions changed because there were, there was more staff for these children. The students changed. The environment changed. The environment was a positive one. The children were beginning to thrive. Teachers were able to breathe a little more. Admin was starting to feel a little more supported, for the most part. You know, and parents like me breathe the sigh of relief because we saw our children flourishing for the first time in a couple of years until now. Now, because some politicians who sit in these comfy seats, who knows where, you know, have pulled numbers out of whatever imaginary database that they have, they've decided that we deserve these cuts, that we can handle these cuts, that our children can handle these cuts, our educators can handle these cuts. So I could go on about this forever, but I'm not. What I will say is thank you. First and foremost to our OPS teachers, thank you for showing up every single day, even on days when you don't feel seen or acknowledged. Thank you for carrying the burden you do so that our students don't feel the heartache, stress, and uncertainty, uncertainty you are all living with. My 10-year-old doesn't have the slightest clue of what's going on behind the scenes. And that's a testament to the teachers that we have at OPS. Thank you for keeping the faith, even when you're witnessing your coworkers and your friends paying the price for these budget cuts. Thank you to the Board of Ed for fighting tirelessly to make sense of all this. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Thank you, Denise, for advocating for our tiny district. Thank you, Therese. I sit here and I see the emotion and the fire in your eyes, and your voice cracks. And you too, Denise. I don't know how you guys are holding it together because I, it's hard for me also as a parent. Thank you to all of you on this board who are carrying the weight of this, these budget cuts on your shoulders. I personally know some of you, and I know how heavy this weighs on your hearts. I know you take this home with you. I know it goes to bed with you. I know it's with, you carry it with everything that you guys do. It's hard to ignore the emotions in your faces and, and in your voices, especially tonight. So I'm not sure that anyone here knows what the next year or two is going to look like, but I have complete faith that with this board under Denise's direction, and Mrs. Bolden, who makes miracles happen every single day, and Mrs. Soloway, that we're going to be okay. So thank you.
Thank you for speaking. And if I could just say, as head of the PTA, if you could maybe help push the lobbying of the state representatives and senators, that'd be awesome. Yeah, anything we could do. Thank you very much for speaking.
Thank you very much. I will say, Lila can rally people like no one else. And we will be looking to, to you, between you and Mr. Scher. We'll definitely be reaching out, so thank you for that. Moving on to section nine, the superintendent report. Dr. McDowell?
Section 9.01 is the enrollment report. March of 2023, enrollment was 275. March of 2024 was 267. That is attached. 02, 03, and 04 also includes the safety drill suspension where there are none reported, and then the anti-bullying report, which are also attached. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to section 10, Bethan for the business administrator report.
All right. Item 10.01 is the listing of your March 2024 budget transfers. 10.02 are your financial statements, so your board secretary's report, treasurer's report, cash reports. 10.03 is the listing of all that purchase orders issued on behalf of Oakland for the month of April. And then 10.04 is the listing of the warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning pending your approval tonight. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to section 11, finance and buildings and grounds report. Jimmy?
Am I going to do this? I thought you, you said you were.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't say that.
I would be happy, but you were like.
I'm sorry, I'm like looking down. I feel the stare. I'm really sorry. I did say that. I did say that.
Thank you, Bethan, for taking this one.
I'm lacking a little bit of sleep. A little bit of sleep would do me well right now. Okay. Okay. So items 11.01 through 11.6 are those items that I just mentioned, are monthly reports as required. 11.7 is the final budget approval. That was just presented. We're not happy about it, but we have to approve it. Item 11.08 is Hardenberg, the risk management consultant. We just approved him in the list of reappointments, but this resolution goes to the Department of Banking. So it's all the blah, blah, blahs and the whereas that they're our risk management consultant. We do this every three years, and it goes, it gets filed with the Department of Banking. 11.09, as I discussed a little bit during the budget presentation, we did move some funds around in our expiring ARPESR support grants to buy a bunch of stuff that we need for next school year. So that's what 11.09 is doing. 11.10 is approving a contract with Virtual Health to provide physical therapy services for the 24-25 school year at a rate of $82 an hour. And the RFP evaluation is attached. 11.11 is approving Laurel Therapy to provide occupational therapy services for next school year at a rate of $82 an hour. And that RFP evaluation is attached. 11.12 is approving First Children Services to provide BCBA services next school year at a rate of $105 an hour. And the, excuse me, the RFP evaluation is attached. 11.13 is OC Panthers Basketball. And if they're going to be using the Oakland Gym for games and practices, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 6:00 to 10:00, May 1st through June 21st. And there is one date that the gym is not available, and they are okay with it, and it is noted in the board agenda. With that being said, seeking approval for 11.01 through 11.13.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call.
Jimmy, I hope I did a good job for you.
I should have did better.
I thought so. Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
With reluctance, reluctance, reluctance of 11:07, yes, I.
Understood, yeah. Mrs. Marmian?
Ditto. Yes.
Gotcha. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushka?
Yes.
Moving on to section 10, Curriculum and Personnel Committee. This is Mr. Schaefer.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So item 12.01, we're looking for approval for kindergarten field trip to Johnson Farms. Item 12.02, we are seeking approval for a paid medical leave that will be effective May 13th through June 18th. Item 12.03, we're looking to approve replacement for, or replacement teacher contract to Janet Cavallaro, who will be filling in for that medical leave effective May 13th through June 18th. Item 12.04, we are seeking approval for contracts effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, for the following administrative staff. Item 12.05, we are seeking to approve contracts, again, from September 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, for the following tenured faculty. Item 12.06, we are seeking to approve contracts for September 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, for the following non-tenured faculty. Item 12.07, seeking contracts effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, for the following tenured office, office service personnel. And item 12.08, we are seeking approval for the 23-24 year for the following substitutes and tutors. There are no travel expenses to report at this time, so we are seeking approval on items 12.01 through 12.08.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushka?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to section 13. This is the Community Relations and Policy Committee. This is Therese.
So some of the reporting things are incorrect in here, but 1301, the PTA liaison report, that would be Mrs. Rotondo, not me.
So the PTA had their meeting on April 9th. I think it was held via Teams this time. I showed up in person and learned that. There has been a date change to this spring fling. It'll now be June 8th. Basically, how we're used to looking at it for the past several years, it's going to change quite a bit, but everybody has all the confidence in the world that it's still going to be just as good. And there'll be a flyer and more info coming shortly. The townwide yard sale is going to take place June 1st. Raying date would be the next day on the 2nd. There will be registration via Google Docs, and that'll be going out by the end of this weekend. There will also be signs posted around town. Muffins with Mom will be held May 10th, 7:45 to 8:30, right outside on the lawn. There's going to be the usual muffins, drinks, photos. Everybody really has a good time with it. They'll move it indoors if the weather doesn't cooperate. Tremendous success with the Ruthon. There was just about $4,000 that are going back to the library for new books and steam kits. And they will also be using some of the funds during the Scholastic Book Fair. The PTA took almost 200 students and families to the Phillies game for the Fanatics birthday. They made it on the big screen quite a few times, and this is the second time in a row that they did it and led the Phillies to a victory. Teacher Appreciation Week is, it's kind of exclusive, they don't want me to talk much about it, but there's apparently a lot planned. Fifth Grade Promotion Committee, working hard toward Bloom Golden Knight for our fifth graders who will be going on the middle school. That will take place on May 31st. Also, the Fifth Grade Promotion Committee is currently fundraising by the Krispy Kreme fundraiser method. $15 gets you a certificate for a dozen donuts. Seems, is that expensive? Okay, it's good. It's a good price, and 100% of the money that is raised will go toward fifth grade end-of-year activities. And if anyone is interested in supporting, there is an oaklandpta@gmail.com way to communicate. There are two current vacancies for the new school year coming up on the PTA board, which are treasurer and secretary. They do have one person that stepped in for treasurer, but if anyone would like to learn more about either of those positions, Lila is your girl before May 6th. The next meeting is May 7th, here in the library, not on Teams, so bodily. And they will need to vote on the new board members. And if anyone could attend, they would appreciate it. They need to have a quorum in order to vote, so that's the importance of showing up for that one. And the final general meeting date of the year has changed due to the fifth grade promotions. It will be June 5th, not the 4th. And location is also exclusive. I guess we'll find that out shortly. And the new officers will be sworn in at that meeting. Thank you.
Item 13.02 is the OMSAC report. Denise?
And me a culpa because I was so focused on the budget that I totally forgot to have asked Adam for an update, despite spending three hours in the sex stand with him on Sunday. So I apologize, but I will promise to have an update for our next meeting.
We are all terribly disappointed, but I do want to mention that I know that assemblies were cut from the budget. And if you could please pass along that I think it would be good for OMSAC to look at assembly support for 24-25. Item 13.03 is the Collingswood report, but Mr. TV's not here, so we'll skip that. Item 13.04 is Oakland Education Foundation, that's me, but I do not have an update at this time. But again, I think, given our budgetary issues, we, that's something of that group, which again, to remind everyone, is a 501(c)(3) thanks to the diligent work of many people, including Denise, to reinstate that, that can fundraise and pay for anything related to the school. So I think we should reunite some conversations there. Item 13.05 are policies for first reading. 2411 is guidance counseling revised, 2423 bilingual education revised, 3211 is code of ethics, 5570 is sportsmanship revised, and 5750, I'm asking us to table that one because there was a question about it we weren't able to answer before this meeting, the equitable educational opportunity. I have a question about a change. Item 13.06, our policies up for a second reading, educational equity policies, affirmative action. We looked at these at the last meeting, comprehensive equity plan, equal employment opportunities, equal employment anti-discrimination practices, equity in school and classroom practices. Item 13.07 is the abolishment of 5755 equity in educational programs and services because that's being replaced by one in a previous item. And so we are seeking approval for items 13.01 through 13.07, with the exception of in 13.05, 5750.
Perfect.
Therese, just so you know, the question that you had in 2260, which is in second reading, the part that was omitted in the other policy, and we could talk offline before, if we're going to review it again, is included in 2260.
Good. Good call, but I, yeah, I'd still like to look at it one time, but thank you. I was scouring it to figure it out. A lot of these policies have moved around. Is it the exact same language? Sorry, because it's not high, they don't have any.
Basically, it's actually more descriptive in 2260.
Let's just talk about it at the committee next month, I'd say, if everybody's in agreement. Yeah, thank you, though.
All right. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions from board members?
Just a comment to offer some clarity. I know, last time I had voted no on 2260, so there are aspects of the policy, just in terms of gender and how gender is defined, that I had concerns with, and it's with those concerns that I would be objecting to the policy, though there are other aspects of the policy that I'm fine with. So I just wanted to give some, some clarity behind the vote.
Thank you for that. All right, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes and no to policy 2260.
Mrs. Falpel?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
I think Todd said it exactly how I feel. Yes and no to 2260.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, no on policy 2260.
Mrs. Bushka?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to section 14, there's nothing to report here, so nothing to approve. Section 15 is our last public comment section. If you have, anyone else has anything to say, this could be about any items, not just items on the agenda, but any items you want to bring to the board, please stand, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.